I'd like to call to order the special called meeting for Monday, May the 8th, 2023. May I have a motion to approve the agenda?
Madam Chair.
Mr. Trapp.
I move to approve the agenda for the May 8th, 2023 special called board meeting.
Is there a second?
Madam Chair.
Mrs. Nash.
I move that the agenda be amended to move the discussion related to superintendent search from executive session to open session.
Thank you, Mrs. Nash. We already have a motion made by Mr. Trapp to approve the agenda. Perhaps you'd like to use that to amend the agenda. Okay. Do I have a second? The motion has been made by Mr. Trapp and seconded by Mrs. McFadden to approve the agenda. Is there any discussion?
Madam Chair.
Mrs. Nash.
I move that the agenda be amended to move the discussion related to the superintendent search from executive session to open session.
Is there a second?
Second.
The motion has been made by Mrs. Nash and seconded by Dr. Scott to amend the agenda to move the superintendent's search establish-- or excuse me, the superintendent's search establishment, superintendent criteria from the executive session to the regular special called meeting.
Lancy, that was seconded.
Excuse me. It's been made by Mrs. Nash, seconded by Dr. Scott. Is there any discussion?
Oh, I'm sorry. I thought I seconded.
There's no discussion. Mrs. Nash, can you please confirm that the motion is correct?
That is correct.
Okay. No, I didn't get a pop-up, so I vote yes. So the vote is six yes, one not present, the motion carries back to the main motion, which is the approval by Mr. Trapp. Please share with me who seconded your motion.
Ms. McFadden.
And seconded by Mrs. McFadden with the amendment that we just approved to approve the agenda. Is there any discussion? There's no discussion. So the vote is six yes, one not present, the motion carries. We'll now move on to Dr. Scott and the superintendent's search.
We do have the consultants here from Mac and Jake. Before we get started, Mrs. Washington will join us later, so I do want the public to know that she will be joining us later, and I will turn it over to Dr. Stein and her colleague. And also, if you would, you and I had a conversation earlier today about whether it is legal and whether it's against policy and practice to have this meeting in executive session or public, and if you would share with them your feedback on that as well.
Happy to. Thank you very much. We're delighted to be here with you, and I'm pleased to be here with my colleague, Dr. Carl Harris. We would very much, before we get started, if the board would be amenable, this is very much almost like a workshop. The board has work to do this evening, very important work. So if the board would be amenable, I'm not sidestepping your question, Dr. Scott, but could we possibly, would the board be open to getting into more of a square so that we could work together? I know we want the public to be able to see that. Would that work out? And also, to answer your question, some boards meet in closed session, some boards meet in open session. This is, as I mentioned, more of a workshop, so the public can observe the board at work. It's perfectly fine for this to be done in open session. We think it's great for the public to see the board at work establishing criteria. In fact, it's really, we're very excited to be here all week because after the board meets tonight to establish the criteria that you're looking for in your superintendent, starting tomorrow morning, Dr. Harris and I are going to be meeting with stakeholders all week and hearing from stakeholders what they're looking for in their new superintendent, and hearing other things besides that from stakeholders. And those two pieces together, the criteria that the board is looking for, as well as the feedback from stakeholders, help us when we try to look at candidates to bring forward to the board. We want to know, and you as a board want to know, because that's part of why you selected McPherson and Jacobson, because of the way we do our search, we want to know, and the board wants to know, what is the community looking for? All of the stakeholders, what are they looking for, and what is the board identified as the criteria? And those two pieces together help us when we start looking at candidates and try to bring forward candidates that embody those qualities and characteristics. And so it's great that we get to do those things this week. It's a busy week for us as we try to think about and learn what is the Richland II school district looking for in your new superintendent. And so I think it's great that the community gets to observe this in action, this work we start tonight as we move forward and try to find you an excellent new superintendent.
Thank you, Madam Chair. We can recess to get the room rearranged, please.
We'll take a recess for five minutes to reset the room.
We'd like to start this work session this evening just to welcome everyone here, and we'd like to do some introductions. I got to meet you briefly a couple of weeks ago when we presented Mac and Jake's approach to doing a superintendent search, but you haven't had the pleasure of meeting my colleague, Dr. Carl Harris. And so I'm going to ask Dr. Harris to introduce himself. He has a very impressive background, and I'm sure you would like to hear a little bit about him and what he brings to the Richland II superintendent search. Dr. Harris?
Thank you, Dr. Stein, and good afternoon. As mentioned, I'm also excited to be here, to be part of the process. Having served as a superintendent, and I'll tell you a little bit about my background in a minute, but having served as a superintendent, I clearly understand the important decision that you as board members have to make as you seek the next leader for Richland II school district. So to tell you a little bit about myself, I am a career educator. I've been in education for a very long time. Having served as a teacher, I served as an elementary principal, I served as a middle school principal, I served as a high school assistant principal, I served in the district office as an assistant superintendent for personnel, I served as an assistant superintendent for curriculum instruction, I served as a deputy superintendent, I served as a superintendent in Franklin County Schools in North Carolina, I served as a superintendent of schools in Durham, North Carolina, and I served as a deputy assistant secretary at the U.S. Department of Education. So I have been in education for a very, very long time and have had some really, really wonderful experiences that I hope will support me and my colleague as we support you in identifying your next school leader.
Thank you, Dr. Harris. And I believe I shared a little bit of my background with you when I was here. This is my 43rd year in education. I used to brag that I was the youngest, and all of a sudden, in a blink, I'm not anymore. But I was an elementary and middle school teacher. I taught fifth and sixth grade and speech and drama. I was an elementary and middle school principal. I also was an assistant superintendent for human resources in both an urban and affluent school district, and I was superintendent before I retired 10 years ago. And in retirement, I continued to support school districts. I helped them with personnel issues that come up, and I do superintendent searches, and I'm very honored to be able to work with Richland II school district and help you find your next superintendent. I couldn't ask for a better colleague to do that with as we work to try to help you fill your position. Now, one thing that I didn't get to do, and I'm so glad in some ways, other than meeting you and learning your names, I'm so glad that I didn't get to ask this next question when I was here a couple of weeks ago, because now, Dr. Harris and I get to hear the answer to this question together. Would you each please go around and introduce yourselves and help us to get to know you a little better and tell us how long you've been a member of the school board and also what, you know, why you're a member of the board? What about you makes you want to be a board member and serve the community of Richland? And I don't want to put anyone on the spot. Ms. Washington, I know you just had the chance to sit down, so maybe I'll turn over to Ms. McFadden and ask if you would please start and share with us a little bit about yourself, if you have children in the district, and why you serve as a member of the board.
Okay, yes, ma'am. So I'm LaShawna McFadden. I served on this board since 2020, and first term is supposed to end in 2024. I do have four children in the district. I have a high school, or two high schoolers and two middle schoolers. I am actually 15 years of health care administrative assistant, but I took a break to raise my kids. I homeschooled them for a while, and when my youngest turned five, I put all of them in public school. And so with that, I'm actually, my career is a political scientist. I went to school and studied about how to change a nation, and I learned that in order to change a nation, you've got to teach the children. So when my kids started school, I just enrolled in SIC program with them, went through School Improvement Council, and so the next step for me logically was to run for school board, you know? So that's how I ended up here, and I'm very happy with the decision that I made. I knew I was going to do it somehow, but I didn't know when. So when 2020 came around, I was like, it's my time, let me run, and here I am.
Fantastic. Thank you. Mr. Trapp?
Yes, my name is Joe Trapp. I'm a, I've lived here originally too all my life. I'm a Spring Valley graduate, so I definitely have some, you know, time invested in the school district. I've done construction all my life, about 40 years now. I've even worked for the school district off and on. In fact, my first jobs as a teenager, believe it or not, was with the school district. One summer I cut grass, another summer I worked with one of our HVAC technicians because I was taking vocational classes at Spring Valley High School. And that's something that, you know, is very dear to me, the fact that we have, you know, not everybody's going to go to college and have a career that is based on college experience. And I really, really want to see us do as much as we can for those that are choosing an alternate route to go into technical jobs and things like that. I have a daughter that's, one daughter, she started USC here in Columbia this year. I've been married 36 years, so I'm very used to working with women. And I really appreciate serving on this board with all these exceptional ladies, and I'm just my, I'm a new member, just since November, and this is really exciting. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Lindsay Agostini. I was in sales and management for 10 years prior to having children. At that time, when I had children, I was afforded the opportunity to be a stay-at-home mom, where I was basically a community servant and professional volunteer. All three of my children started off in private school. We switched over to public school when we realized we were not from this area, but when we realized what Richland II had to provide. I've been on the board since 2016. The reason why I remain on the board is to provide the students that are in the district now the same opportunities that my children had. My son will be graduating from medical school in a week and a half. My oldest daughter lives in Copenhagen, Denmark, and then my youngest is a sophomore in college. And so I'm a very proud parent, and I hope that we can afford or provide those same opportunities for all students to reach their potential that my children had. Thank you.
Good afternoon. I'm Dr. Monica Elkins-Scott. I've served on the school board for 10 years. I'm a veteran school board member. I've actually been in education 35 years, retired in 2020 as an elementary principal. I ran for the school board because at the time, this school district demographics looked totally different than what it is now. And I saw where equity wasn't fair for all students, especially for African-Americans. I saw where we had racial tension, and it was in the other direction. Now, the school district has flipped, and I'm still seeing some of that racial tension because as a veteran school board member and as someone who actually taught in this school district, the demographics have changed. Now we need to change the mindsets of current and former board members. We do need to change the mindset of the community and understand that regardless of your zip code, regardless of which school you attend, you're still capable in achieving the very best, and that's why I'm on this board. I think I mentioned to you guys, I've served as a teacher, an assistant principal, a principal, a college adjunct professor, and I do have my own business where I actually train teachers and superintendents and faculty and staff members. So I'm still invested in education. One thing I like to say is I have nothing that I get from being in Richland II. I have no kids that have attended school. I don't even have any children. I do it because I care about every single student in this district. I've been the school mom. I will continue to be the school mom, so I will continue to be involved, and that's why I'm here, because I think we're on the right track, and I'm ready for us to get a superintendent who can come in, who's not afraid of change, who will not be run by the public, and who will come in here and do what's right for faculty and staff, for students, for the school board, and let's just move this district forward. So thank you.
I'm Angela Nash, and I have been in Columbia now for 23 years. I have a very loud voice. It runs in my family. I've been married for six years. My husband does a morning show here, and we've lived in Richland now for over six years, or just at six years since we've been married. And one of the reasons that I ran for school board is sometimes I think that you also need like a myriad of personalities and perspectives, and I've been in business, gosh, since I was 14. I had a small business that I ran and continue to do so now. I'm a realtor, and what I kept hearing from people was teachers wanted to be heard, students wanted to be heard, parents wanted to be heard, and I wanted to be an advocate for them. And so that's why I ran for school board and, you know, being able to be a part of this and give some business aspects of that. I don't have any kids in the district currently. I do have a stepson who graduated from Blythewood, and I talked about him last week. He has highly functioning autism, but he has done really great things and gone on to be a really incredible person who lives on his own and did all the things that people said that he couldn't do. And so I think it's important for our students to hear that as well, and so that's another reason why, is like no matter where you come from, you can still go and do amazing things. I come along from a long line of people who did that, so I'm just very proud of that and to be here today. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Nikki Porter, and I ran for school board because I'm very much invested in Richland II. And as a product of Richland II and a former educator in Richland II, I saw that education was changing very quickly in our community, and I often heard my colleagues and feel as though their voice wasn't heard. And then when I saw things change in the media about what was happening in education, I wanted to make a difference in a big way. And so I felt like this would be the first step in doing that. And how I'm invested is that, one, as a former student, and then I have two children that are in this district, two young children in this district, and I want to see that we're moving forward and that they are in a district that is moving forward and great things are happening. I spent nine years in the classroom here in grades four and five, and then five years as a technology and learning coach in this district. So I think often about our students and about our teachers and our staff, and also the parents that have students that are moving along through elementary and high school and all of the different programs that we have within our district, and I want them to continue to succeed.
Good afternoon. My name is Tamika Washington, and I am a product of Richland II. I graduated from Richland Northeast High School. Go Cavaliers! And I ran and was elected to be an official on this board because I wanted to, my main theme was to restore the public's trust in our ability to make sound decisions on behalf of the students, the teachers, and our Richland II community. I am a business owner in this community. My business is literally five minutes from the district office, and so I have a chance to connect with a lot of business owners and community organizers and to hear their voices well and how they too, in the process, have seen the change and the shift in our district and wanted to make sure that their dollars were being well-spent for outcomes. A lot of my, a lot of my peers that I graduated with, believe it or not, we are majority here in this district, and their children attend the middle schools and elementary and high schools. And so I hear their voices about how they are invested, and the district that we once knew was what we want to see going forward. So for me, it's because I choose to live in this area, I choose to work in this area, I choose to dine and shop and everything in this area, because for me, it's not just about the actual buildings, but it's about the entire Richland II community.
Thank you, everyone. We appreciate you sharing about yourselves and helping us get to know you a little bit better. Really appreciate that. Okay, time to get to work. Here we go. We are going to give you a piece of notebook paper because, you know, we're in school, so we have to get to work, right? Here's what we want you to do. We're going to take about five minutes for independent work. Remember that when you were a student? And what we want you to do is, and some of you shared a little bit of this already, you must have anticipated what the next activity was going to be. What we would like for you to do is just think to yourself, what qualities and characteristics are you looking for in the next superintendent that could help us build those criteria? So just quietly to yourself and list them. You are not turning your paper in, but you will refer to it because in a few minutes, we'll come together as a group, and we're going to start charting them. Every idea is a good idea, so just get them listed, and then we will come together and start sharing. Okay? Okay, we're going to get started, and we are going, for those of you who are educators, we're going to do sort of a modified round robin. And if you don't mind, we'll start with Ms. Washington. Now, there probably will be duplication. If you say, I'm going to say something completely unrelated to a characteristic, but you say the color red, and the person next to you, and you're second, and you also have the color. the color red, and the person next to you, and you're second, and you also have the color red on your list, you don't need to say that. But you may have, the first person says the color red, and you may have on your list, well, the color reddish, reddish and magenta. I don't know, I'm making things up. Go ahead and list that. We know there's going to be some duplication, and then we will work together to start merging ideas. But if you have pretty much the identical one, you don't have to repeat it. Okay? So Ms. Washington, would you like to start?
Yes. Focused, someone who is focused.
Ms. Porter?
I put someone who doesn't have a personal or political agenda.
Personal.
Or political agenda. Someone who does not have that.
Does not have that.
Yeah. Or political agenda. Mm-hmm.
Dr. Scott?
Someone who knows how to build relationships, sustain and maintain relationships with the community, with students, parents, all stakeholders, and with the media.
Dr. Scott, check me and make sure I'm getting this right. Dr. Scott, does that capture it? Knows how to build relationships and maintain with all stakeholders, including community and media. Ms. Agostini?
Somebody, a goal setter, somebody who will be able to set metrics and measurements.
Yes, someone that is concerned more with results than appearance or image.
I'm sorry, would you repeat again? Concerned more with results than appearance?
A transformational leader.
Ms. Porter?
And so I put someone who works well with.
Ms. Agostini?
Someone who has experience in working in a diverse district.
Someone that treats each child as an individual.
Ms. McFadden?
Someone who has a vision of academic success.
Vision of academic success. Ms. Nash?
Someone who's not an authoritarian and works well with the staff.
Okay, time to switch to new page. Dr. Scott?
Someone who's approachable.
Who's that name?
Approachable.
Approachable?
Someone who is supportive of extracurricular activities, whether it be clubs, arts, athletics, but just somebody that sees the true benefit of a well-rounded student.
Okay, I don't want to sound sappy, but I did write down kind and loving.
Someone who's able to discern abilities of a person and will allow that person to flow in it.
Discern abilities of a person?
Yeah.
And then can we read the second part?
And will allow them to flow in it.
Flow in it? Dr. Scott?
Someone who is bold and fearless. Somebody who has had success with working with pupils in poverty and minority students,
Ms. Agostini, can you read this and make sure I captured it correctly? I think I might have left something out. Has had success working with pupils in poverty and closing the achievement gap. God, I left something out. Thank you. Oh, Mr. Trapp?
Yes, someone that recognizes the Board of Trustees as the voice of the people.
Ms. McFadden?
Someone who knows how to pivot and take advice and be flexible.
I have somebody that wants to get their hands dirty, and I mean by that, being here in Richland 2 and this be their focus, especially for the first couple of years.
Dr. Harris, did you capture that?
Being present. Thank you. In Richland 2.
I don't think there's anything wrong with the way you said it to begin with.
Mrs. Porter, I like your comments too. I appreciate it. Thank you.
Remember earlier though, there are no wrong contributions. We want you to get it out there and then we'll be tightening.
Someone that doesn't let their ego affect their decisions.
I told you all I used to teach fifth grade, and I'm having this momentary back to teaching fifth grade language arts. Effect, affect, I think it's affect. Somebody check me. Yes? Okay. Ms. McFadden?
A visionary with a strategic plan on how to move people forward in spite of differences.
Oh, that's yours, Dr. Harris. I'm sorry. Will you repeat, please?
Okay, I'm sorry. A visionary with a plan on how to move people forward in spite of differences.
A plan for, actually, a plan for...
Moving people forward.
Like together, like right now, I don't feel like we're moving together, but to get the community, teachers, students, stakeholders all together as a vision to move the kids forward in whatever we're trying to do, which is get them to graduate.
The main thing is in spite of differences.
Is that captured?
Mr. Trapp?
I no longer like sitting on this side of the room, but anyway.
Well, we're doing this rotating, who's first?
I wrote down team player, but I'd like to add to that, knows the difference between being a leader and a team player.
Ms. McFadden?
Experience managing thousands of people and departments.
Experience managing thousands of people and departments. Tony, is that right? If I put this on the front of the, will you still be able to see it? Ms. Washington?
Okay, I'm like the kid in class that got skipped a few times. Thank you! No, I'm just kidding. So I'm going to say, because my colleagues have shared some of the same things, but I'm going to say someone who is proactive. We can also say untrustworthy.
You can say anything you want, as long as it's professional. Thank you. Ms. Porter?
Great at motivating staff.
Ms. Nash?
Someone who is, understands the role of parents as stakeholders in their kids' lives and encourages parents to be more involved, taking some of the burden off of teachers.
Ms. Nash, would you mind repeating the second part, please?
Oh, and encouraging, encouraging parents to take more of an active role in order to
This will be a two-part. Someone who's respectful, no big I's and little u's.
Respectful?
Yes.
Someone that is selfless.
So someone that is able to change and shift the internal culture of a school to reflect the values of the community.
Change and shift the internal culture of the, will you repeat?
She said change agent, which would probably encompass that, but be able to change and shift the internal culture of schools.
Change the culture of schools?
Yes. To reflect the values and principles of the community.
Ms. Washington?
Someone who can prioritize the finances.
Ms. Porter?
Someone who will bring ideas for improving discipline.
Ms. Nash?
I put someone who is a creative strategist and has a can-do attitude.
I said a creative strategist with a can-do attitude.
I said a creative strategist with a can-do attitude.
Dr. Scott.
Someone who is friendly and understand friendships, but not afraid to have tough conversations when need be.
And this sort of encompasses a few things it says, but a proven track record. When I'm looking at bringing ideas for improving discipline, prioritize the finances, just an all-around proven track record.
Mr. Trapp.
Knows how and when to delegate responsibility.
Would you mind writing that one? Knows how and when to delegate responsibility.
Knows when.
Ms. McFadden anymore? No, I'm asking, do you have any more?
Oh, I do. So I was gonna say what he said, but it was kind of a little different, but a leader who's not necessarily a manager, but a delegator and an influencer.
Ms. Washington. Porter?
So this is not necessarily skills, but maybe even the knowledge of technology. So we're a one-to-one district, so someone who is, has background knowledge with the one-to-one model and technology background.
So, background in technology?
Or the know-how, the know, knowledge of a district with technology, that experience. Technology experience.
Ms. Nash?
I have a loud voice, though. I would say someone whose expectations for our students are high but healthy, meaning that like what we expect of them as far as their behavior goes is, is at a higher level than maybe where we are right now to address some of the disciplinary issues that we have in grades.
There may be a better way to say that, but. Dr. Scott?
Someone who knows how to show empathy. Oh, is it?
No, I'm gonna say I had it.
Cause I had approachable here, but I also had empathy.
Ms. Agostini?
I'm going to piggyback off of Mrs. Nash. I wanna put in for employees, too, expectations for our employees are high but healthy.
A hospital, and it's kind of like the other ones, it's a hospitable climate in our community, which means welcoming parents and community leaders inside.
Hospitable climate in our community. Hospitable climate in our community. Ms. Porter?
I'm not sure if this one has already been said, but I think maybe Dr. Scott said it. Smart and with it.
With it?
Yeah. They can be quick on their feet, with quick responses, just with it, and be able to respond quickly. Or fast-paced.
Ms. Nash anymore?
My whole sheet got covered, so I'm good.
Dr. Scott anymore?
Yes, I have two more. One who is a positive role model by words and actions. By their words and their action, yes.
And I'll take your other one.
Someone who promotes within and trains staff and education within.
Ms. Agostini anymore?
I have one more. I would like to see somebody that when we think of equity, they think in terms of providing each student all the tools that student, individual student needs to reach their full potential, but not the expectation that there's the same outcome for each student.
Can I add something to that? Because what I had similar to that, I had sees color and diversity. Because you hear people say, "I don't see color," and if you don't see color, you don't know how to interact with certain students if you don't see that.
You want me to take a stab at it?
Go for it.
So. Ms. Agostini, I'm paraphrasing, but I don't, but I wanna make sure I'm getting it correctly. I think what I heard you say was making sure each student gets what they need, but I'm not sure that's really what you meant.
That's, that's the first part of it. I want them, each student to get what they need, but not the expectation that the outcome is the same for each student.
So to get what they need to accomplish their individual goals.
Thank you.
So each student should get what they need to accomplish their individual goals. Does that capture what you're trying to say? Does anyone have anything else that's occurred to you, even if you already said I've completed my list?
I'm not sure if anyone said visibility, and what I meant by that is just being visible in the district, at the schools, at the events, you know, those type things.
Dr. Harris, can you add that on your list? And Dr. Scott, does this honor what you mentioned about seeing color? Seeing kids for who they are, I think is what you're trying. But I don't wanna put words in your mouth. Does this capture it?
And I'm having a bit of an issue. Well, I thank Mrs. Porter for the individual goals. See, what I struggle with is, on what that says is, so say somebody does want to be a doctor or a lawyer, and that's what they want to do, but are they capable of doing that? And I don't mean to be ugly, but I've got a child with learning disabilities. Some things are not realistic for her. So what I don't want is that we expect everybody to be able to go to college. I don't want the same outcome expected from what they get, so that they can have different outcomes.
If we add in to realistically accomplish their individual goals?
Sure.
Well, no.
Yeah, I, I'm just not quite sure of the, you know, what I'm trying to... How about just instead of goals, their individual potential, instead of the word goals?
That's better. Each student should get what they need to accomplish their individual potential.
It's that they will support community partners.
I'd like to add one more.
What we'd like to be able to do.
May I add one?
Oh, I'm begging.
Thing to that.
Sorry, Dr. Scott.
No, when I'm thinking about each student should get what they need, it made me think about the diversity that we have here. That students should be able to see someone that looks like them standing in front of them, because we don't have that here in Richland, too, that often. So if they're gonna get what they need, they also need to be able to see someone that looks like them who have been accomplished as well. So that would fall, I guess with HR, making sure that the human resource department are vetting and recruiting.
So remember, you're, I'm not discounting what you're saying.
Right.
What we're working on, a criteria you're looking for in your next superintendent.
So someone who knows how to hire staff that can make sure that our students are excelling and their needs are being met.
Thank you. So are you wanting them to know how to hire staff to make sure your students are excelling? Are you wanting someone who puts a concerted effort at hiring diverse staff? You said two different things.
Both.
Okay, Dr. Harris gets the gold star.
I missed one. It was experience in more than just one level school, so not just elementary, but elementary and middle, or middle and high, one of the handles.
Anything else anyone wants to add? Okay. Here's what I'd like for us to do. We're gonna take a little break, which we planned for, but while we're having the break, with Tony's permission, I'm gonna put these up, Dr. Harris and I are gonna put these up on the wall so that you can look at them at your leisure and digest them, because you guys have an amazing list of criteria. Some are similar, some aren't. You can't have however many we have here, 50 criteria. We need to collectively help you get these down to four to six. So they're all great, but you can't have them all on the list. These criteria become very significant through phases one through four. We ask the applicants to write to them, so when they apply, it's not just, you know, name, rank, and serial number. We don't just ask them to give us their address and their degrees and all that stuff. We ask them to write responses to these criteria. So they can be meaty, and they're, believe me, Dr. Harris and I have seen some criteria that are paragraph-long. So we can put a lot into each statement, but we cannot have 50 of them. We want four to six. So, and we'll get there, but the first thing we want you to do is to be able to digest them, because you've not had that opportunity. So let's take a break, and it's about three minutes to six. Let's come back together at 6:20, which will give you time to take a bio break if you need it, but also to review the statements, because then you're gonna be asked to make some choices. Okay? So we have a method to our madness. All right, we will get these up on a wall where you can see them all together, and, and then take a look at them, and then we'll come back together promptly at 6:20, okay? Thank you.
All right, everyone, welcome back. We are now going to relocate to the wall, so come on over. Because we're going to do some work around these poster boards. I know you all were taking pictures and looking at them. And want to thank Tony for being so flexible. Come on up. We're going to work together with the wireless mics, so that hopefully he can pick up the volume. And Dr. Harris and I will just pass these to you all, because we have pretty loud projecting voices. So, here's what we want to do. In fact, Dr. Scott, I'm just going to hand you this mic.
Okay.
And Dr. Harris, will you hand that to someone else? And we'll just use our best teacher voices. Hopefully, you've had a chance to look over all the different points you came up with. These are... This is an amazing list of criteria. Fifty-eight different points. Several of them probably go together. So what we'd like to do with you right now... Dr. Harris, okay, if you'll pin. Any of these that you think kind of naturally go together, we want you to help us do that. Because we're going to try to combine the ones that you think do sort of match together. Because then, we're going to ask you to make some forced choices. But first, let's try to combine the ones that you think maybe could go together.
Can I start with knows how to build relationships and maintain relationships with all...
I'm sorry to interrupt you, Dr. Scott. Let me just number these, so that you can say which chart...
Oh, okay.
Because it'll help us all focus on where to go. Four, five. The numbers mean nothing, except the way they're up on the wall. No one's more important than another. Okay. All right, Dr. Scott, which chart...
Okay, number two, the second bullet. Knows how to build relationships and maintain with all stakeholders, community, and the media. And I think that's so key, because when we're talking about having a superintendent, that person should know how to interact with our stakeholders, our community leaders, our teachers, our students, our staff, school board members, and the media. Because we want the media to be our friend.
So are there others that reference relationships that could be combined?
I was going to say at the bottom, not an authoritarian works well with staff.
So, before we move on, is the board... Are others on the board comfortable with this one going away? Because it's... Do you feel it's encompassed by this one?
It needs to be combined.
We're trying to combine.
Yeah. It's authoritarian might need to be added.
Yeah. There's just that word.
Okay. So you're saying works well with stake...
Not authoritarian, but someone who knows how to build relationships and work well with stakeholders, community leaders, media, students, faculty, and staff.
So are we saying that the works well with staff is covered up here?
Yes.
All right, so let's get rid of that. Do I like my other marker better? Where's that big, bad one?
You need a big one.
Yeah, that blue one. Okay, so that's good. What else? What... Do you see any others that deal with building relationships? Because that's what this one encompasses. Ms. McFadden?
Number six, the fourth one down, relationship builder with all stakeholders. That's kind of the same thing, that one right there. Yes, ma'am?
This one. So this kind of encompasses that, yes?
Yes.
So can we scratch?
Yes.
Okay?
I see one.
Your marker's there.
Number five.
Thank you. Okay, on chart five...
Support community partners.
Okay. Is support community partners covered by this big one?
Knows how to build relationships.
Yeah, I think so.
Okay. See, that was number...
Five.
Here we go. So if I can scratch this one? Okay. Everybody good with that?
Mm-hmm.
And here's what we want. If you're not good with it, even if you're the lone voice, speak up. Okay? Anything else on relationships? Ms. McFadden, for any additions from moving all stakeholders forward?
Yes. That's good.
Is that covered by that big one up here?
Yeah.
I don't see half one. I see, yeah. They can't...
You see one that you need?
Not yet.
Okay.
Yes.
Well, let's make sure, Ms. McFadden. Did you want that one as a standalone, or were you saying it was covered under that one?
I think it's covered under that one.
You think it's covered under that one?
Yeah. Of course not.
Okay. Everybody agree?
And on number eight, if you come down to the fourth bullet, respectful, no big...
Yep.
That will fall up under the same category. Ms. Trapp?
I'm looking.
Okay. I've got one, just... And this is questionable on page... Or number three. Understands the role of parents as stakeholders in their kids' lives and encouraging parents to take a greater role, thus lessening burden of teachers.
I was wondering if that was going to be one, too, under that? Do you guys think that? I thought so, too.
That it can go under what we're working on? Yeah.
Right. It would be... Yeah, you would be a bridge builder with parents. So I think we could move that one off and...
Okay.
And include this.
But you know what? I would like to see a number two, sort of what stakeholders... What do we mean by stakeholders? Like, I would like to see parents included in there.
Right. Maybe we can say...
Yeah.
As...
Scott, for just... Okay. You're... You guys are... You're like the overachiever. Because you're already doing... You're already getting to the point of actually writing the criteria statements. Which is fine. But are there any others that have similar themes? This one really deals with relationships. Do you see any... So let's stick with that theme for now. Do you see any others... Let's just think about relationships first, that deal with relationships on any of the charts. Dr. Scott, do you see any others on relationships?
I was thinking number four. Knows the difference between being a leader and team player, and can do both.
Yes. Yes.
So is this...
With relationships.
Similar enough? I think...
Yeah.
Do you think they say the same basic thing?
I agree. Yes.
Yeah, because a person who knows how to build a relationship, they're going to know those things. And so I think when we said staff, staff is included with that. It's covered. So I think that will cover.
And if you build relationships, you're a team player. You can do that.
Okay. Do we have consensus on that? I don't want to pull away if there's not consensus. Dr. Harris, do you see those?
I'll see you.
Okay.
I see one more if someone hasn't.
I do. I think number two. Treats each child as an individual.
Ms. McFadden, what... Which number?
Number two. Treats each child as an individual.
I was thinking number six, works well with the school board. Oh, is that... Is that... Oh, okay.
All right. I'm not sure that I agree, going back to Ms. McFadden's, treat each child as an individual.
I think that would come up on the academics.
Yeah, or something of...
Instead of relationships.
Yeah.
Yes, I think that would probably be more academic.
I think it's a different category. Yeah.
Let's stay with relationships.
Okay, number six. Number six, works well with school board.
I can't see.
Yep. Works well with school board on number six.
Yes.
Okay. So everybody see that one?
Does it go with the discern abilities of people?
Under relationships?
No, that's not working relationship. I don't know.
So did anyone capture it under?
That's that first...
Because it's on the...
Second bullet on number...
The stakeholders and community and...
Number two. So it was on this one that we're talking about, right? I'm not sure you want to give that up yet. Let's think about that.
No, we're not giving that up. We're seeing...
No, no. I'm not sure you want to give this board...
Works well with school board.
Oh, I see. I see. It might be into a different category.
Because you also have recognized the board as voice of the people.
Yeah, that's true. That can fall upon the school board. Yeah.
You may... It may not...
Will Rihanna get six?
I think that's a very... It's such an important bullet point.
We can understand.
Yeah.
I think what we have, too, is the... Oh, gosh. The point we're talking about over there, I think there needs to be a distinction between the board and the rest of the community. And the reason for that is there is an accountability by the superintendent to the board that doesn't exist with his accountability to the community. It's a different relationship, so I think that would be a better...
And vice versa.
Yes.
You all are a team, the eight of you.
What about positive role model and words and actions?
What... Which chart number? Positive role model and words and actions.
I was thinking that would stay up under the school board.
Okay. Okay.
What about the one before?
Hospitable climate in our community?
Yeah.
Can show empathy? That might be the one I was really looking at. I knew it was on five.
Approachable.
Kind and loving.
So, you have several of these...
Snowflakes.
You have several of these that may end up morphing together.
Right.
And turn into one statement. They're almost that affective. What kind of person will he or she be?
They're freely...
I wrote down personality traits and put all of them. Because there is a difference between a personality trait itself, as carried out, and skills. Skills and personality traits are...
Or, as some people call them, those soft skills.
Soft skills.
You have them or you don't.
Right. Personable.
Yeah. So are we still categorizing? Yes.
So these are relationships.
Yeah, what about the one of being visible in the community? Because that's...
That's relationship.
That's still relationships.
That's one that deals where if a person is building the proper relationship, that...
It will happen.
They are two separate things. But if a person is building...
Yeah.
The proper relationships, they'll be out there in the community, in schools, to build.
Yep.
So are we saying eliminate that one? Because we have that one here. I personally think that if that is properly applied, that relationship building, it will encompass. And that was poorly applied at all.
Right.
And that's what we need to do. We need to make sure we hold whoever interviews with us, we need to make sure we hold them...
Accountable to that.
Accountable.
So I... You're saying like, to put it together, though, right?
Yeah.
I agree.
Are we all agreeing with...
It's on chart five. It's the third, sort of last one, I think.
Yes. Chart five.
Being visible with the community.
I think being visible to the community, that would...
Yeah, third from the bottom. Chart five.
We eliminate this.
We kind of look at that one. I think it's encompassed in that.
I also think we also under the other part have, well, people present. So under what it requires, that could be... That covers that, too.
So I...
We're... We were talking... We were saying hospitable climate in our community as well. Is that going to fall under building a relationship? Because that's a part of relationship building. Is... Yes.
Yeah, I am, for sure.
So, Dr. Harris and I have changed our plans, and those of you who are educators know that you do that. We've changed our plans like four times today. How about on some of these that we know all go together? Let's start generating the criteria statement. Like, this is a biggie. That's one of them, for sure. Right? It just sort of is one of its own. So let's... Let's definitely keep that one. But some of these that are individual statements... Dr. Harris, can you guide us to...
Can I add something?
Yeah.
When I'm looking at experience within a supportive magnet programs, we're talking about that can fall up on the academics. And then we start saying treat a child as an individual, then we could add all of those and have a bullet for academics.
Okay.
Yep.
Because, yeah, I think that also goes to the one where it said, I think it was one where it said about how to relate to the child and looking at them as individuals. That one also can go under there. Number two.
Yes.
Next to the last bullet. Number two.
Treat the child as an individual.
Yeah. All can go under academics, right?
That could be under academics.
Right.
All right. So what are we saying? This one goes with...
Academics. Experiences with or supportive of magnet programs. That's number three, the third bullet. Yes. All of that would...
Maybe we can color code them?
I need a sticky. Yeah. Like, color code, marker.
So are we saying that treat each child as an individual? You're pretty much saying the same thing as...
Right.
For academics. Just for academics.
Exactly. Magnet programs that we have at school. So if we're treating the child as an individual, we're aligning them with programs that best fit their goals and potential for leadership.
We have this, we automatically have this.
Yes.
Yes.
So we can eliminate this.
Yeah.
Well...
Can we make it... It's like a link it?
This one speaks specifically to magnet programs.
But we're more just say academic programs.
Okay. Go ahead, Dr. Scott.
I was thinking more academic programs, not so much magnet programs, and just reword magnet to change that to maybe academic programs. And treat a child as an individual or experience... Yes. Yes.
But you also had...
Page one.
That last one. You had this one.
Mm-hmm.
Their individual potential.
Right.
And we had this one. We had this one. That all fall under academics.
Academics. Yes.
So is there a way we can kind of take pieces of each one of those and create like that statement that we want to do? Because even the supportive of extracurricular activities, it says benefits of a well-rounded student. I think that still... That also fits in the child, treat each child as an individual.
So let's do this. Let's go through it. And as on chart one, point out to Dr. Harris which ones are focused on academics, and let's get to the highlights of them.
Okay.
And then he and I will wordsmith for you and get it... What we will do is we're going to... Once we kind of have them morphed, he and I will wordsmith and get it back to you. It's going to be a very quick turnaround to try to get this thing posted.
Okay.
It may even be done this week. So, anything on chart one? Each student should get what they need to accomplish their individual potential.
You need a...
This one here is academic, right?
Yes. Academic. Yeah. And that's chart one, right?
Chart one.
Okay?
Can we put an A by it, so we know all the As? Oh, yeah. Put it... Yeah, so put it... Dr. Harris, have you put an A by it over there, too, so that when you take the form...
Would you put A where?
By the one that I just said. Each student, right there. Just put like a letter A. So we'll put letter As. The suggestion is by each one in this category.
Yeah.
That's the A, right?
Yeah, perfect.
Expect... Well, still, number one.
Anything else on chart one?
Yes. Expectations for our students are high but healthy.
Oh, yes, that's right.
Yeah, that's a good one.
It's number two.
Number two. Yep. Chart number two, the second one from the bottom, treats each child as an individual. A.
Anything else on chart two?
Chart number three?
Nothing. Number three from the top, experience in supportive of magnet programs. We have that?
I think we had that. But we said all programs.
Yeah, all programs, yeah.
Remove, remove magnet and place all.
Yes.
Is there one for discipline?
Yeah, does the discipline one go with that, or we want to stay with that?
That would be a different category.
Okay, different category.
Go to discipline. We'll do disciplined in probably school.
Okay, the next one, chart number four, the first bullet, supportive of extracurricular well-rounded students.
Yes, okay. Put an A, that's an A.
Or do you think that will support behaviors?
I think A, academics.
That's an A.
Because behaviors are academics.
Success working with people, poverty and points of achievement gap.
Yes.
That's it.
Okay, I do, um, I want to work with number seven.
What is it, experience multiple levels?
Academic success.
Oh, that's the school.
Yeah.
Oh, you see at the bottom?
Yes.
The five?
That one won't go with that. Hold on, experience managing thousands.
Can you think of five? How about five, the last one, experience at multiple levels of schools?
It's not academic.
That wasn't academics, that was, that was experience of the superintendent. Remember someone said they want to make sure they have experience at all levels?
Metrics and measurements?
That would be academics.
That might be academic, yeah.
Results.
See, I think of that for me, when I say that is, well, I see it academic, I see it as business. Like I was running the whole thing. Can we separate that out?
So.
There is one for business and one for academics?
So would that just be?
Well, there's results focused and there's metrics and measurements.
Okay, so, yeah.
So one can be business.
Anything else on six, seven, or eight?
Is the experience working in a diverse district apply to the?
That's going to be our experiences, because I think we're going to put that as like experiences.
Okay. Next.
Do we plan to get another break? I don't want to sound inappropriate, but we do have a program and I do feel like board members should go up there just to say hello. It's our turnaround program and it's with kids who've had extreme academic or discipline issues who have turned themselves around. And I would hate for parents not to see a few board members, even if like two or three run up there just to say hello, we're here, congratulations, and then the next three or four go up there. But I think it started at six thirty and it's from like six thirty to seven thirty or eight o'clock. But I just think.
Do, because they're probably doing a presentation, like do it at seven thirty or seven twenty, when they're closer to closing up, so then they can see us.
Right, that's why I'm just saying if we could at least.
Get through this, the rest of our evening is. Okay.
Okay.
Do you want to, like if we try to have another break at seven fifteen, if we're not finished with this part, is that, is that a good?
I think that would be great just for us to run up there, because I think it's important for the parents to see.
So, we've talked a lot about experience, let's go to that as another header, because that, we hit that several times as we started talking about academics, so let's now get to experience.
Number four, doesn't let their ego affect their decision.
So let's, why don't we just start with chart?
I'll start with number one and then work our way, that makes sense.
We kind of got into a groove with that sometimes.
Okay, absolutely.
And we'll put an E in front of anything that's kind of an experience theme.
So expectations for employees are high but healthy?
Yes.
How about not necessarily manager, but a delegator and an influencer?
That was the first one?
Yeah.
I think that's an E.
It isn't a P, I feel that's more a P.
Dr. Harris, what do you see that one as?
Personality. But I'm not sure if they're going to do a category for personality.
Yeah, that's what it feels like.
Yeah, but we're not doing a personality, are we? No, so we are going to do a personality on the chart?
I can see it as experience, because it really does take experience to be able to.
Be a delegator and influencer.
Fully. Because I think, I must have bought up that, or one of you, about the capacity to be able to delegate, to know when to, when not to.
Right, okay, experience, sounds good.
So, experience helps you figure out that stuff.
Yeah, we.
E for us.
How about promotes and trains within on page number?
We're going to put an E by that one, yeah.
Promotes and trains within?
Expectations for our employees are high?
Yes, sir, bullet number three.
Three and four, three, four and five.
Three, four and five, yeah.
All those are Es, three, four and five are Es. On that page right there, bullet, that bullet and the next two.
Let's kind of revamp how we do this for a minute.
This is E?
Expectations for our employees are high but healthy, that's not really experience, that's an expectation.
Oh, that is expectation, okay.
Smart and with it, responds quickly.
That's experience. Because if you don't have experience, you're not.
Expectation of your superintendent.
So we're doing difference with experience and expectations, is that two different categories?
I would, to me, experience is.
Like his background, but we're looking for like in his actual work.
Experience is when you said.
Promotes and trains within.
That you want somebody who has experience at multiple levels of schools. That you want somebody who has experience working in a diverse district.
Okay, so that's what we're doing for.
That.
So I guess they didn't explain how many categories we had.
That that person works well with the school board. You can be sure that if the person's been a superintendent or if they've been a deputy, Dr. Harris and I are going to reference check and talk with the board president. How has Dr. Smith worked with you as a board president? You know, if the response is, pretty well, oh, that's a red flag. You know, so these are things that, Dr. Harris, correct me if you disagree, but I see those as more experience kinds of things.
And depending on how you word it, understanding the value of a diverse workforce. We've got experience managing thousands of people in multiple departments on page eight.
Track record.
Track record, yeah. Are we, are we over here?
So, right, but I think, I think you can't say all of these things are necessarily experience.
Well, I do agree with the promotes and train within, because an experienced leader needs to know how to develop staff to be able to do that.
And only an experienced leader knows how to respond quickly on their feet too. Because if you don't have experience, you're going to overthink it or underthink it or not know how to think about it. And that's going to come off of experience, knowing how to respond to something.
I, just from my experience, I'm not, you know, so much in favor of the smart and with it, that, you know, responds quickly. I want thoughtful, correct answers, you know, and not just giving an answer.
Well, but if people ask you as a superintendent of Richland Tool, on the fly, you're going to be on every single news station and then repeated all day long, you got to know what you're saying and say it right.
Absolutely.
One fumble, you're going to hear about it for a whole month. Two months, you know? Like it can be thoughtful, but you have to be able to come up with something.
Yeah, think on your feet.
Quick, yeah. But someone who needs a long time to think about it, you're going to have.
Go home, process it and then give me an answer tomorrow.
Upset that they, it took you this long to respond.
Well, I, I understand your point with the media, but.
Yeah. And same with parents, if I don't hear from you fast enough and something happens to my child, that's another thing to complain about, you know?
Can we say responsive?
Responsive, I like that.
But yours is.
That's a experience, that's more an expectation. Yeah, those are two, I feel like, I think what's happening is one, is one part of us are looking at it from an adjective as an adjective of they are somebody who's quickly, is quick on their feet. And then other people are looking at it like, hey, if I emailed you, did you respond quickly? Is, am I wrong in thinking that?
Um, kind of, sort of, but not so much email. If something happens and I come.
Like if, if somebody like, like she was saying about, she calls a parent, parent, or teacher doesn't respond quickly.
I guess I wasn't thinking on that level, I was thinking if something happened at the school and someone came up there and said, tell me, what are you guys doing right now? A fight broke out and a kid was stabbed. You don't say, well, let me think about it tonight and I get back with you tomorrow. You need to know how to think on your feet and say, you know, we've been working on this, we have SROs and, you know, you have to have a plan.
So would that almost go, or would it create more of a statement of, you know how to, that person has experience working with the media?
Crisis management.
Effective communication.
Crisis management. Yes.
Right, that's, that sound like experience. And you do need to have somebody that, I don't think that's an expectation. I think that is experience, because if you have somebody who's never interacted, they're going to be fumbling, they're gonna, we got to have somebody who can be the face of these, you know, when things pop up.
That's face.
So which one are we on?
Number four, number one, bullet four. Yes.
So did we decide that we wanted this one to be an expectation?
I think we said.
Experience, yes.
We said it's going to be experience.
I thought she said that she was going to place that under expectations, but that sounds like experience to me, but.
This is your list. We're guiding you, you see it for as a dozen experience, then that's where it will go.
I'm on page five.
Should we go with this one as experience?
Yes, that's what I would be also agreeing with.
So I thought we were working.
I think I looked through two, does anybody see anything on two or?
I think of, not afraid to say no come with experience too. Mm-hmm. Bold and courageous, yes.
What about prioritize, prioritizes the finances and bringing ideas, work for the discipline?
Page three in the middle?
See, that's what I thought, yeah, that's what I, that's what I say.
What were the categories?
It would be nice if we had all the categories.
I think we're developing the categories while we're, sort of. So, I've heard somebody say you see management as another category and prioritize finances and, I guess, your discipline fitting more under there. Okay, we're going to start with number five.
I'll be in the experience.
Yeah, I like the experience for that.
Experience also, when know when and how to delegate responsibilities. That's five, the second bullet.
Did we have anything on four?
No.
Pivot, take it by the.
Five is proven track record.
Is that management?
Know when and how to delegate responsibilities, five, the second, yes, that would be experience. And technology experience, that would be experience.
What about, I think it's five, the last one, experience at multiple levels of school.
Technology experience is on number five.
This is on number five, the third one.
Five, two, technology, you can say we're going to another one?
This is what they were saying right here. And then also here.
Know that there are.
For experience.
For experience.
So you want to both of them?
Yes.
So proven track record, delegating and experience at multiple levels. That all fall under experience.
Think we're talking about different school level, like elementary, middle.
Right.
Right.
On page six, the last one, experience working in a diverse district.
Experience.
Page six, you said was.
Experience working in a diverse.
What about set some metrics and measures?
That's more like a requirement, right? That's what we're asking is.
Well, for me, from my perspective, I was thinking about somebody that's set a graduation. Somebody that has set a standardized test and can give back to us, has close achievement gap. That's my, in my head, what I'm thinking about.
Can we put that as an experience and a criteria though? That's what we, or expectation.
Yeah.
Okay.
I'm happy with, yeah, because I think we can, one, in different ways.
Yeah.
What we're thinking of.
I think that's definitely expectation, that should definitely express.
Oh, the metrics, the set metrics in the middle of the page, set metrics and measurements right here.
Yeah.
I think we wanted that under expectation.
Or academics. This is experience.
Experience.
You want that under, um, academics or experience? Can't really have it under both for your criteria.
I want under experience. Because I think it can encompass academics when you're looking at the academic test scores or. Where that works.
Well, presumably someone's going to be, have to come and show that they demonstrated growth in previous districts. And.
That's fine.
Is that what you're talking about?
Yeah, yes.
Personally, you'd get more under academics, but that's.
That's, oh, okay, very good. That works, yeah.
That's fine. I can give it a question, yes.
Where do you see it?
For me personally, this is my track record.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, that should.
So far, you see it more under academics or experience?
I mean, when you start looking at my track record, I hope you're looking at.
So like your experience and stuff?
So do you see it more under experience or academics?
I see it as part of my experience.
Because we've got through the track record on experience.
I mean, results can expand beyond academics.
Sounds great, absolutely.
I've heard you guys talk about some other things that are just as important as a student's academic success. Results focus means. A lot of, but it is, it is a major measure.
So you could probably cross that line.
Your results focus is going to be a major measure.
Right.
Whatever you come up with.
Are we going to have a category for just school board relations, like candidate?
Yeah, I think that would definitely.
Well, I just now added in under academics, academic success and results focused.
For experience on page eight, experiencing managing thousands of people in multiple departments.
Are, are we doing management, sorry?
I don't know, did we?
No, this is on your experience, so.
We're still on experience. How many do we have? Four to six major.
Oh, I thought you were just getting forty-six.
No, I, I have, I didn't know somebody else hears things like that.
Anything else that, does that capture all of your experiences? Experience ones? We have a management one that we started earlier and then there's a school board one, you wanted to.
For management, you could add motivating staff.
Sorry?
Management motivating the staff?
What page?
Um, it's on page eight.
Okay. I see this as more of that affective. But, that's just me, you, it's, this is your search, your criteria, but I see this fitting personally more with motivated staff, kind and loving, approachable. Can we do that page right now and just?
Yeah, let's knock it out.
Change climate.
Take, take all those off.
Change school climate eight. See what the E is on eight, eight is the last page, I'm so sorry. Can I see what the E is come down with? Just change. Yes, that would be management.
What about being here in Richmond two?
Are we doing the affective climate, the personality ones, so that we don't have to keep going back to that?
No, we're on management, so let's go back to chart one and find anything that's management.
Expectations for employees are high, are high, but helping.
Management?
Understands the value of a diverse workforce, that's management.
Management?
Now, that paper is done, number one, so we could probably take down.
How about, what was the second one on there?
Understand the value of a diverse workforce.
What about on page two, concern more with the results than the appearance and image? Is that management?
I don't see.
That's the affective one.
Okay. Innovative? Management is one, or parent, but.
Innovative might be.
Your leadership style. Your leadership style is a toward taking.
We're, uh, what, which.
We're on page two, last bullet.
But we're not, I don't think.
We're not, we're saying two, the last bullet.
Oh.
Not a far, far.
This is management?
Yes.
What about on page three, firmly understands friendships, but not agreeing to have tough conversations?
Yeah, that's management.
This for you?
Yes.
Management?
Yes. Now, we're talking about bringing ideas for improving discipline, now we gotta have a different bullet for discipline, or is that just on?
It's on, um.
Discipline, then that would add, bringing ideas for improvement discipline, that would be management.
Yep.
Number four, is the learning ability of a person. Yes, it will allow them to fly. That's management.
On four, chart four.
Chart four, number two.
Number two, right here. Management. Knows how to pivot, take advice and be flexible, that's management.
So it's still chart four?
Yes.
Yeah, four.
I agree.
Yep. Doesn't let ego, that's your decision, that's management.
I would say, um, can be nice to.
There you go.
We don't have anything left on, chart five.
Except for positive role models, which is one of those soft skill ones.
Six, not afraid to say no.
Um, does.
Oh, we put not afraid to have tough conversations, is that the one? No, I don't think she added that one.
She added that one.
Okay.
So now, not afraid to say no.
That's your statement, that's number six. That's number six, the first bullet.
Oh, that's.
Not there. But there is, number six, the first bullet.
Which one?
The first one, not afraid to say no.
Not afraid to say no?
Yep.
Uh, let's see, we missed.
And then we have ideas for improving student discipline on eight. Pretty much captures management? See how it comes together, academics, experience and management, board relations.
Yes.
And, um, whatever we end up calling those affective. All right, ready for board?
Yep. There's nothing left on chart.
If we start over here, this one is taken care of. Anything over here is one.
Why don't we call this relationships? And then we can have this one, which is a stakeholder's. And the board ones in there. Because you also probably have, or I should ask you a question. I think you brought, I think we talked about this when I made the presentation. Am I correct in thinking that the expectation that the person resides in Richland two school district? So sometimes districts put that into criteria, so this would be a good place, board and relationships or something like that, to call it board, and we don't really, we know we have things, but we don't typically keep post the criteria with the thing on there. But if we're thinking of that, this could be sort of board and relationships, so that we have those expectations, and I reside in the district, the relationship with the board, the relationship with the community, it could all fall sort of under this particular umbrella.
Okay.
So, um, the relationship one is chart two. Almost what I mean by that, but, um, other ones specific to the board.
Competent. That's not a relationship, that's more.
Living here, okay.
So what do we call the relationships?
Yeah, that's that one that's circled in red.
Yeah.
Oh, understands the role on page three, understands the role of parents, ask stakeholders in his lives, and encourage parents to take.
And that first one, proactive and trustworthy. So the first two. The first two, the first two.
That's on chart three also.
Chart three, yeah.
This one?
Well, it's wonderful too.
So, on this, this one here, do we capture, um, I understand giving and maintaining a relationship with stakeholders, but I think I, what I was hearing was, wanted to also focus that the relationship has to be with the board also.
Yes, right.
Because there's a different kind of relationship, because it's a more intimate kind of close working relationship.
Correct, yeah. I think we say with all.
Yeah.
It's on, on chart six, it says worked well with school board.
Yeah, and chart seven, maybe or maybe not correctly recognized before. Go to chart six, she said something on six before, you did.
Right there, right before that.
That's at the bottom.
Here?
Yeah.
Worked well with school board.
Is it the same thing? I mean, as long as it are, I mean, as long as.
Relationships, recognizing board as the voice of the people, I think that goes in the relationships too.
Oh, cost of raw.
This is a R.
On number five, we don't pay, what can show you the B if you cost of raw loyalty?
Right there.
Where?
Relationships, yes.
And then the one above it, that's not scratched out. That show you the B. It's the third bullet, right below the third bullet.
Number five.
A number five, the third, right below the third, right there.
Anything?
That was relationships.
Was there another one that, I missed the other one.
Positive role model and words and actions.
Oh, okay.
Don't mess it up now.
We got you.
So those, oh, there you go.
Personal agenda, where's that gonna fall off?
Well, that's what I said earlier, but they say that fall up under.
Maybe that's one. How about being here in Richland two on another seven?
Relationships too. Best relationships also being here.
Can we take a ten minute recess?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, one. I think we're close, so yes, why don't we, why don't we take a, um, yeah. What time do you want to be meeting? Seven twenty-five, seven twenty-five, just so we, out of respect. Yep. And that what we're gonna suggest is that these other things are sort of soft skills, that we're gonna call kind of the affective, we'll make a separate statement.
Okay.
To those, and then when we come back, we'll, we'll review those while you guys go and come. Thank you. This is gonna be good, cause it's gonna put them, five, we can get in five criteria on those. All right, are you reading the ones that are more of just the soft skills and affective?
Just kind of how we've done it from each chart.
Well, let me get over here. I think what's left is innovative.
What chart?
Two. Two.
Okay.
Competent.
Same chart?
Yes, two.
And competent? Yeah.
Same chart, two, concern more with results than appearance. Concern more with results than appearance and image. Everything here is covered. Everything here is covered. Uh, without, no personal agenda.
Number.
Uh, six.
Chart six.
Chart six.
And.
Then chart seven, approachable. Kind and loving. Bold and fearless.
What's that?
That's six.
Oh, wait.
Yeah, that's chart seven.
Okay.
I'm gonna tell you.
Uh-huh.
Um, selfishness. Selfish, selfish. That's it.
Okay.
Yeah.
That's a false.
They captured everything else.
Now, every single statement is gonna be in the criteria.
Thank you very much for your-
I think-
So, yeah.
So, because we'll, we'll need the mics so that the community can hear us speak. If we don't have the mics on, then our, um, live stream doesn't work for sound.
Thank you all, uh, for your participation in that, and these are your five themes that you came up with. So, what Dr. Harris and I will do is, we will take the statements, or the, the points that you helped to organize, and we will start wordsmithing. Now, we will not get every single point into, or because we'll, they'll be massive. But we will do our best to capture the themes that you grouped under each of the categories. And, um, my goal is to get them back to you yet this week, maybe even tomor- I mean, my goal would be to get them to Dr. Scott tomorrow, if I can, after Dr. Harris and I look at them and he and I get, you know, work with them back and forth in between stakeholder meetings, if we can. Um, and then she will get them to the rest of the board, so that you all can look at them. Um, if they look okay to you, or give suggestions, can you tweak this word? I think this would say it better, but don't hesitate and let Dr. Scott know what you think needs to be improved. She'll get it back to me, Dr. Harris and I'll tweak back and forth until you're satisfied. It's, the goal is to try to get them finalized by Thursday. Because, um, Mac and Jake is only open for a half a day on Fridays, and I really wanna get this to them, um, if possible, by Friday morning, so that we can go live with the posting on Monday. You know, if we don't get it posted till Tuesday, it's not that big of a deal, but because we are on a, uh, an ambitious timeline, the goal would be to get this posted on Monday, as planned. Sure.
When I spoke with you and we were talking about criteria, I just have a question. Something like the superintendent's spouse cannot work in a district, isn't that a criteria? Or is that something that you'll just talk with later, and then, let me see what else I had down as a criteria?
So, that would not be board policy, Mrs. Scott, or Dr. Scott, excuse me.
Um, well, we're not looking at board policy, we're talking about our criteria. Well-
Well, that's what I said earlier, but they say that fall off under the characteristics of-
I think-
So, yeah. Because we'll, we'll need the mics so that the community can hear us speak. If we don't have the mics on, then our, um, live stream doesn't work for sound.
Thank you all, uh, for your participation in that, and these are your five themes that you came up with. So, what Dr. Harris and I will do is, we will take the statements, or the, the points that you helped to organize, and we will start wordsmithing. Now, we will not get every single point into, or because we'll, they'll be massive. But we will do our best to capture the themes that you grouped under each of the categories. And, um, my goal is to get them back to you yet this week, maybe even tomor- I mean, my goal would be to get them to Dr. Scott tomorrow, if I can, after Dr. Harris and I look at them and he and I get, you know, work with them back and forth in between stakeholder meetings, if we can. Um, and then she will get them to the rest of the board, so that you all can look at them. Um, if they look okay to you, or give suggestions, can you tweak this word? I think this would say it better, but don't hesitate and let Dr. Scott know what you think needs to be improved. She'll get it back to me, Dr. Harris and I'll tweak back and forth until you're satisfied. It's, the goal is to try to get them finalized by Thursday. Because, um, Mac and Jake is only open for a half a day on Fridays, and I really wanna get this to them, um, if possible, by Friday morning, so that we can go live with the posting on Monday. You know, if we don't get it posted till Tuesday, it's not that big of a deal, but because we are on a, uh, an ambitious timeline, the goal would be to get this posted on Monday, as planned. Sure.
When I spoke with you and we were talking about criteria, I just have a question. Something like the superintendent's spouse cannot work in a district, isn't that a criteria? Or is that something that you'll just talk with later, and then, let me see what else I had down as a criteria?
So, that would not be board policy, Mrs. Scott, or Dr. Scott, excuse me.
Um, well, we're not looking at board policy, we're talking about our criteria. Well-
So, if that is the desire of the board, just like it's a requirement that your superintendent resides-
Right.
-in the district-
Exactly.
And you want, if the-
Must live in a district.
If that is something that you, as a board, want to include in the criteria-
And like car and house allowance, is that something?
That is not something you put in the criteria.
Okay, that's what I wasn't sure.
Those are things that you will, car allowance and housing and all of that-
So, that's a negotiation.
Those are things you're going to negotiate when you negotiate the contract.
Okay, I wasn't sure.
As far as the spouse not working in the district, um, that's probably something you're gonna want to talk with your attorney about, if you wanna put that into board policy, 'cause that's, if that's not part of your board policy.
Dr. Scott, can you, um, share the criteria that you discussed with, um, Mac and Jake?
I didn't discuss any criteria. When she sent the list to me, I sent an email to you guys saying, "Think of something that you would want to be a part of," the criteria, and I gave some examples. So, as far, and let me just be clear, and I want not only the public to know-
It's just a question.
No, I'm just saying this, I want the public and you guys to know. I can't make any decisions, whatever decisions-
I mean, like, the ones that you just said-
Well, no, I just created these myself, and these are the same ones that I sent to you guys in an email.
Those?
Yes, so I'm not sure if you-
Okay, I didn't receive that list, but you just said it.
Okay, well, I do apologize. When I sent an email, I sent it out to Ms. Agostini and Ms. Nash, and then I say, "Please distribute this to the group."
Do you know who's supposed to be the person that sends me that email?
Um, I guess Ms. Nash would be.
If it is, it was, if it was the street, I'd have missed it, sorry.
Yeah, I mean, it's not a big deal. It was just that, when I sent the email, I just said, "Think of some-" Right, exactly, 'cause we get so many. So, I said, so, what I said was, "Just consider some criteria, some things you're thinking about," and then I just jotted just a few examples, but I had no conversation with them about what the criteria-
That's right, because I didn't see it, so like, if I receive an email that, maybe like that list right there, then I start thinking about things, and I may have something, but then, if I hear about it and we're here, then people get upset if I ask a question about it, but if I've never seen the email, that's why. And so, this is an example of something like that.
Right.
And if I get it ahead of time, it's perfectly fine, and then it's also something that prompts me to, um, one, um, digest what has been sent out-
Absolutely.
And think about what I think about it, you know, and to-
And I guess we just have to do a better job of getting emails out, because just-
Well, hopefully we get ourself a secretary again.
Right. Just remember, you know, I have no discussions with them outside of you guys, except for what they send me, and whatever they send me, I send out, so. But, thank you for that.
So, the criteria are the things that we worked on this evening, that will develop into actual criteria statements that will become part of the posting. And they'll be narrative statements that will be bullet-pointed, if you will, in the posting, and will be listed as qualifications that your candidates will have to have, that will go, will fall under these themes that are on these chart papers that we're taking with us and are gonna try to put together into statements for you to consider yet this week. Those other things that were mentioned are really more things you're gonna negotiate, um, with your candidate in a contract. Okay? All right, um, if there are no other questions on the criteria, um, we'd like to move along and talk about advertising. Um, because of the, there's a very nice brochure that could be put together. Our recommendation is that we not take time to do that, because it will definitely delay the process. It involves putting photos in, and it, I don't think that you have the luxury of the time to do that right now, and I don't know that it really enhances your, um, your posting. But we do wanna talk about advertising, and we talked a little bit about this when I presented to you a couple of weeks ago. Um, on the agenda that we gave you this evening, you have several posting sites listed that are, are of no cost to the district. Um, there are recommendations that we're giving you for paid advertising. These were, these are not in addition to what you're already expecting to pay. These were, these are included in the cost of the contract that you, you signed with Mac and Jake. But, um, our recommendation would be to post with AASA, American Association of School Administrators, Top School Jobs, that's with Education Week Online, also NAPSE, National Alliance of Black School Educators, and ALIS, the Association of Latino Administrators and Superintendents. The downside is that they have minimum posting, uh, times, as you know, so you won't get the advantage of a full thirty days, because we're only gonna be posting for about two and a half weeks, but with your approval, we'd like to go ahead and, um, post on, in these, uh, four sites. These are the main sites that, um, school administrators who are looking for superintendent positions will go to, in addition to the ones that you see above, um, and obviously, you have an amazing website. Um, your tech department has done a great job of creating a superintendent, um, link right on the homepage, and you're gonna put the posting there once we get it ready, that'll link right to the Mac and Jake site. But, um, these other sites, we would recommend, if you, if the board is okay with it. Does not necessitate a vote, um, but more of just a verbal approval, since you've already approved the contract.
Since we, you know, that was put in the contract, that would be the expectation.
Yeah. Okay. The next item that you see on the agenda is about compensation, and that really gets more to the things that Dr. Scott was talking about. Um, what we would recommend, in fact, Dr. Harris and I were talking about this earlier. Do you, do you wanna speak to that, Dr. Harris, of how we would recommend putting that in the posting of, um, compensation, so that we attract the best candidates?
Uh, my, my suggestion would be to advertise compensation as a competitive salary. Um, you know, for a school administrator, rather than putting in a specific amount, because if you put in a specific amount, and then that amount, uh, will not, um, satisfy the candidate that you actually want, you've kinda locked yourselves in. By advertising a competitive salary, it means that, you know, you want a quality person, but you also, uh, as a school board and as a community, want to compensate that individual in a competitive manner. Uh, and that competitive manner allow you to look at competitive salaries, um, within, um, school districts that you believe are like your district, and offer a compensation package that would, would be competitive for you to recruit and, um, maintain that type of candidate that you want.
One thing that would be helpful is if you could provide, um, Dr. Harris and me with copies of the previous superintendent's contract. More importantly, for what the benefits package was, because we will get, um, questions from candidates of- and, and you could have your attorney do that, um, but we will get questions about, you know, will I have a car allowance? Will I have, um, medical and dental? Does it cover family coverage? Um, uh, is there a moving allowance? Those kinds of things become helpful for us to know, so if you could provide that. The dollar amount is less important at this point, because we know you're going to offer a competitive package, but knowing the kinds of, um, fringe benefits is helpful for us to know. So, if you could share that when you get a chance, that would be helpful, over the next, sometime before we post the position, or, or early in the posting would be helpful.
Madam Chair, may I ask a question?
Certainly.
Okay, is, if we are not, uh, how can I say this? If like, say, our co- current contract, there are things that, you know, we may not be including, like extreme fringe, maybe, then what will we do there? What will we be providing you all? 'Cause we don't want, like, whatever we, whatever, you know, we come up with now, based on things that our attorneys talk to us about.
So, what you're saying is, the contract was established by a previous board? And so, um, do you understand what we're saying? Okay.
So, you know, it probably would be then, in that case, a good idea for you all, maybe at your next executive session, to talk with your attorney, or at some point, get with your attorney, and talk about the things you might be willing to provide in terms of, um, benefits, so that we have an idea of what we can speak. We don't call a candidate and say, "Hi, we'd like to talk with you about this position," or "You've applied for the position, let me tell you what the benefits are." But candidates ask us, and we do not wanna get in a position of having a top-notch candidate and risk losing them, particularly because of the timeline, and so it's helpful for us to know, and that's why we're asking. If, if your benefits package may look different than it was before, then you all should just talk amongst yourselves and figure out what you're willing to offer, and be ready to discuss it with us, because we may come back to you and say, "You might wanna consider X, Y, Z."
Let me just ask you a question. We have a board meeting tomorrow, which now is probably too late to do that. The next board meeting is May twenty-third. Would that be too late to get the information? So, if you guys go back and look at the email that I sent, on that email- The email that I sent to you guys, if you read it, it asks that come up with the criteria, and I gave you these examples. So, I think that would be beneficial, so when we meet on May twenty-third, you can have your list, because I was hoping people came with their list tonight, but miscommunication, so. Excuse me? No, the list, did you bring your list for, tonight? So, I guess that's something we can talk about on the twenty-third now. Well, we can't, because everyone didn't get-
The twenty-third-
Right, we, yes.
Okay, we can talk about, but we need the attorney.
Right, so we probably want to wait until the twenty-third, and then therefore, everyone have an opportunity to go back and create their list, and then bring it on the twenty-third with the attorney, and we can discuss it then.
Dr. Scott, the twenty-third is fine, because, in fact, the reason I stood up earlier when, when, and I didn't mean to be rude, um, Dr. Harris, I, I have a complete timeline for each of you. I know that Dr. Scott sent each of you kind of the dates you needed to put on your calendars, but this is the complete timeline for the search, and, um, Dr. Harris and I wanted you to have this. We both have it, obviously, but we just have a hard copy for you. Um, and the, the position will close until the third of January, and we really, we, we look and see who's applied for the position, but we don't want to give the candidates forward, and so the twenty-third is the time for you each to, uh, for you to meet this board and discuss it.
So, let me just ask another question for clarity for the entire board. You just mentioned that we need to have this conversation in executive session with the attorney, and I wanna make sure we're clear on that, because we don't want a misunderstanding, or someone thinks that I came up with the idea of executive session, because that's the mix-up for today. So, in the presence of all board members, is there an option to do public and executive session, and we choose? Or would you say that this conversation only needs to be held in executive session? 'Cause I don't wanna be accused of making a decision, because I don't do that. So, please clarify, either or, or- So please clarify either or, or does it must, is it going to take place in an executive session? Or we have the option to select how we want it done?
Yeah, I, I think you refer to your attorney.
Yeah. And when we're looking at FOIA where the concern has come in was when you're doing establishing employment criteria, however, employment compensation is covered under FOIA.
So you're saying that executive session
If you're talking about compensation and we've, in receipt of legal advice from an attorney, that would be covered under FOIA.
Right. But also this conversation that we just did today, this activity was also covered. And even the lead said, you know, executive session initially. And then you guys received an email and then it said, let's switch. So I want to make sure that we are clear because I don't want the misunderstanding that I get to select where we're having it because I don't have that power. So I think we're clear that we will conduct the next meeting, May 23rd in executive session.
The email that I received from our attorney recommended that we change it and put it out in public session. And I will go with our written attorney's advice. Thank you. Would you like to speak? Excuse me.
No.
No, she asked to be recognized.
I understand, but you're being rude. Please don't do that. Please don't do that.
You're, you're jumping in. Go ahead. Finish your statement.
Please don't do that. Because this is what a new superintendent would see, the rudeness. We just created a list of what we want from them, but we're not showing the same thing that we're creating for the superintendent. So my question will go back to, I know our attorney stated today that we should do it in the public. But when you and I had a conversation, you initially told me executive session. And then you said we could do either or, which it didn't matter to me because we move at the will of the board. So I just wanted clarity that it can be either or. And I know you sent an email saying that it could be either or, but our attorney changed that. Which I totally respect what the attorney says. That's why we're here. But I just didn't want a misunderstanding about that. Because we have different attorneys, you know, saying different things, but I know we need to go with what our attorney said. Not to override what you guys, because we know that you guys are the experts. So, so don't misunderstand that. But the attorney did suggest that we do it in the public. So that's why we decided to bring it here.
I, I just want to clarify. I don't believe I said that this meeting tonight needed to be held in executive session. I, we were happy to have this meeting in whatever forum you wanted to. You reached out to me and asked if it could be an executive or open session. And I shared that it could be, that, that was your, that was your call. But I don't believe I indicated that tonight's meeting had to be held in executive session. I just wanted to clarify.
Right. But I'll go back and I'll share the email because it said either or.
Right.
Right. Okay.
But I'm saying prior to tonight, I don't believe that I said that this meeting needed to be in executive session. I just wanted to clarify that.
I'll make a, a comment. And I, I think the comment I would like to make is that, you know, you always follow the advice of your board attorney who is really guiding you based on South Carolina public school law mandates. And so even if we make a recommendation and the attorney review it and has an opinion about it, I would always say go with your school board attorney. That's, that's why you have him. And that's his, that's his level of expertise. And while we're expert at some things, we're not, we're not lawyers. So.
Thank you, Dr. Harris. Is there anything else that we need to discuss this evening?
The only thing that we wanted to make you aware of, if you would have interest, is that nine o'clock tomorrow morning, we start the first of several stakeholder meetings that we'll be holding over the next three days. And we respectfully request that you not attend. And you probably are glad not to have any more meetings than you need. However, we do have a schedule if you are interested in seeing what's being held. And so we brought that for you this evening. Yes. So we are going to meet with every possible stakeholder group, as I shared with you when, when I presented to you a couple of weeks ago. Dr. Harris and I work in a tag team. So one of us will facilitate, the other one will be feverishly typing to try to capture everything that we hear. We will then put all of that together and meet with you on the 23rd via Zoom at your board meeting on the 23rd. And we'll, we ask for no more than 30 minutes, probably 15 is plenty. But we'll give you an executive summary at that meeting and share with you kind of the theme of what we heard from all of the stakeholder groups. And shortly thereafter, you will get a very lengthy report. The survey goes live tomorrow. So anyone in the community who would like to complete the survey, including board members, can. But we ask you all not to come to the meetings. So the people feel comfortable to just speak openly with what they have to say.
So let me be clear. May 23rd, you are during our general board meeting, wanting to be zoomed in. Okay. Thank you.
There's no point in the board paying for either of us to come here to see you live for 15 to 30 minutes. So that's why we suggest doing that virtually.
Great. Thank you.
And you stated that you're going to do that during the public part of it. So that will go back to after inspirational moment. And I think I sent that to Ms. Counsel, that you guys, okay.
And I believe that is all we had for you this evening, other than any questions that you all may have for us that we can try to clarify.
Questions, comments, board? There's no discussion, may have a motion to adjourn.
Madam Chair.
Mrs. Washington.
I move that we adjourn the May 8th, 2023 special call board meeting.
Is there a second?
Second.
The motion has been made by Mrs. Washington and seconded by Mr. Trapp to adjourn the May 8th special call board meeting. Any discussion? No discussion. We'll vote with our hands, all in favor. Raise your right hand. All those opposed? The motion is seven yes, zero no. The motion carries. The meeting is adjourned.